This meeting of the Gadsden City Council now come to order and the chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask David Lawson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, we're thankful again for an opportunity to come out and serve. We ask that your hand be involved in all decisions that are made to the benefit of the citizens of Gadsden. We ask that your hands be in the state and the federal governments. We ask that you continue to watch over troops who are still fighting overseas. We ask that you be a source of comfort and relief to those who are going without food. We ask that you be a blessing unto those who can be a blessing unto others and have proven their generosity down through the ages. We ask that these things be ever mindful. We ask that these things be what we apply to our own lives and we will be ever grateful and thankful to give you the praise in your son's name. We ask these things, amen.
Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the council meeting held on July the 10th.
So moved.
Second, clerk will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair, entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July the 6th through the 12th.
You, so moved.
Second, clerk will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. Unfinished business. We have two resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1520 Lewa Street in District One. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on June 12th. What's the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, on advice from the Building Department, we will ask for an additional 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
There is a resolution, abatement of nuisance on property at 1419 Jackson Avenue in District Five owned by Jack D. Clay, Sr., and wife Marjorie N. Clay. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on June 12th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, we, upon the recommendation of the Building Department, I'd like to ask for another 30-day table.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for an additional 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table.
Number nine, this is a time and place that advertises to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. The Fish Market Restaurant at Gadsden Incorporated has applied for an on- or off-premise retail beer and table wine license at 1504B Rainbow Drive in District Four. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. You know, one of the things I'd just like to highlight as it relates to this process is that it just kind of demonstrates some of the hard work that our local, that our city employees engage in to help to streamline our processes. We don't give up any of our enforcement opportunities, but we do work with local businesses to help streamline that process. And I think that's important because it really encourages growth and activity.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution appointing members to the Gadsden Museum and Art and History Board. Cody Robinson, Joe Hedgespat, and Raymond Stats are appointed for terms expiring April 17th, 2013. Derrick Williams, Craig Lipscomb, Fred Huff, and Brian McCollie are appointed for terms expiring April 17th, 2014. Dr. Evelyn Brandon, Dr. Renee Coverhouse, Howard Warren, and Scott Heinzman are appointed for terms expiring on October 17th, 2015. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second. And that's April 17th on here for the last one.
Yeah, it is April 17th.
Okay.
See any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eleven is appointing and reappointing members to the Board of Adjustments. James Thornton and Prophet Coats are being reappointed and Clarice Robinson is being appointed to replace Debbie Wally. Is there, the terms will expire on May 18th, 2015. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Twelve is an ordinance amending City Code Section 46-91 through 46-99, regulating noise. This ordinance provides for plainly audible reasonable person standard rather than a decibel-based measurement system to determine violations. The distance will be 10 feet or more from a vehicle and 50 feet from a building or open space. Chair, this ordinance was presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider that today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Okay, I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We have one vote against. Motion carries to adopt the ordinance.
We've already adopted, but I would like to commend the chief for working on this. We had some real problems with barking dogs and how to handle that situation and sometime it pitted neighbor against neighbor and this is going to alleviate that problem we had and appreciate the chief's work on this.
I think people will appreciate it too, Bill, from the standpoint of cars driving up by you and the loud noises that emitted from there, butlers, so on and so forth. But I too commend the chief, he did a great job.
Those people that didn't have a dog might not appreciate it.
Don't let them bark.
Yeah, keep it from barking, you'll be all right.
Can't bark all night.
I'll save my comments to the end.
That's why I didn't say anything, I'd just say, oh, I wouldn't have discussed it.
New businesses, any new business? Oh.
Gosh, I thought you were...
It is.
Don't tell them that.
I go first, Mr. President. I've got two items of business need to bring up, please, and ask for unanimous consent. One of them is resolution authorizing bid number 3215 to Iron Phillips Incorporated for fuel dispensing and management services in the amount of 21 cents per gallon over the cost.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
See any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. What this is, we actually buy on our diesel fuel yearly, we actually buy about 250,000 gallons of diesel fuel every year. We have at least, at least a savings of $67,500. And our gas, we buy at least 150,000 gallons per year and our total savings on that's going to be 55,500 with a total savings per year of $123,000. And also, as we talked upstairs about it, we're going, they're going to put in a new tank out there in Burns Park and that's going to free up our puddle works department where they can be able to get gas out there closer and that's actually going to save us more than where they happen to go get gas now.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one has a resolution authorizing renewal of agreement with Edgewell County Board of Education for dirt that we use to put on top of our landfill. I'd like to ask unanimous consent for this also, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
See any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one item to bring up for new business, for consideration under new business today. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with Today in America. I ask that we consider it today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt. Second.
See any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This is essentially, again, an agreement with, between the city of Gadsden and Today in America for production and broadcast placement nationally and regionally for a five-minute video that essentially is to engage in publicity for the city of Gadsden as a great place to live and do business. So it's a good opportunity for us. I think the, you know, arguably the return on investment can be, can be quantified, but we're excited about what this may bring for us.
Any other discussion?
I've seen these on other cities and they're very professional and they're done right. I agree, it's going to be a great return for us.
Any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any other?
No, I didn't have one.
Robert had one, I've got one. Robert and I have one.
Oh, you?
You can go.
No, I yield to you. Al, just go first.
That can be taken in more than one way. Wiser also. The, Mr. President, I have an item, ordinance I would like to introduce today for unanimous consideration, unanimous consent today, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
You'll tell what that order says, please?
I will let you all know what the ordinance is. We had a quick second there. This is an ordinance amending the fiscal year budget 2012 for funding, you know, for a grant in the amount of $28,284 for the police department to buy tasers. Now, this is, this is in addition, this is a grant that's shared between the city, police department, and the sheriff's department.
Since I know what it is, I'll support it then.
Thank you. We're glad you do that, Mr. Stewart.
Okay.
You get a second.
Second.
We need it for the vote, no order.
We don't need any more discussion.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Robert, I guess you're on.
I guess I'm on, yeah. This is an ordinance amending the city code section 82-5 and 2-341 regarding fines and cost to municipal courts. So I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for passage.
Second.
See any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Please tell them this is not ours, this is the state.
I got that under my discussion, unless you want me to just go ahead and tell them?
No, 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 go ahead.
I mean, I can tell it now. I'll tell it now.
Let's load on it first.
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion, so you want me to discuss it?
Go ahead and discuss it now.
We typically discuss after we go.
I want you to make it clear that this is not our cooking.
You taking away my thunder from my closing remarks, but anyway. You know, this, this...
Just come out from something else.
Oh, I got a bunch down here, I got a bunch down here. You know, this is one of those ordinance that you think about it and you look at it and say, well, that's, that's okay, that's great. This came from our great and wonderful legislators. In their instant wisdom, when they were elected a few years ago, they said, well, we're not going to raise any new taxes. I mean, that was the pledge. And what they did was, they passed the book to the cities by adding fines, going up on court costs on the least of people who can afford it. And, you know, it galls me when they add taxes to people in disguise and go down and make this grandiose statement and news conference about, as Republicans, I'm going to just tell it like it is, we ain't going to raise no new taxes. And that's a bunch of bull, that's all this is, a tax on poor people. And they're forcing the city to enforce it for them instead of them being, have the nerve to go out and do it themselves. And I just have a serious problem with that. So if you, if anybody who get caught and you realize your court cost is going up, don't call the city, call your local legislative delegation because they all supported it. I'm through with that, that's my...
This is definitely a cryptic tax.
Okay.
And it's kind of coded in revenue for the city, but this is definitely a cryptic tax.
It's a revenue for the state.
State.
They were trying to raise money because they had, they were losing money in the court system and employees. So this is a way for them to raise money and they say, well, oh, by the way, since you guys got to pass it, we're going to give you a few dollars too.
Absolutely.
I ain't thinking about it.
And Robert, you know, they committed themselves again, you know, they made that statement during the time that they were going to be elected, but you know, they continued to remind us, you know, that they say that they're not going to raise, that taxes is off the table, they're not going to raise taxes on the citizens, but as late as last week, at one of the speeches here in the city of Gadsden, one of our local legislators reminded us again that they are not going to raise taxes.
Well, wait a minute now, they went up $40 on non-traffic, 26 on traffic, but they ain't raising taxes. What is that?
That's what they say now.
And of course, we can keep, we can keep...
We know what it is.
We can keep $10 of it.
Yeah, but they get...
They get all rest.
Yeah, but we know what it is. Like Derrick said, encrypted, you know, and...
If it's not taxes, then give us all the 40s and the 26s.
That's true.
If you don't need it, I mean, it's tax money trying to operate the state. I'm through with that.
Okay. Is there any other new business?
We didn't vote on that one.
No, we didn't vote on it.
Okay, let's vote on it.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no.
No, you got two.
Two no's. Motion does carry to adopt.
Any other new business?
I'm not going to pass the taxes for them.
Any other new business? Department reports, committees, boards, are there any?
Oh, man.
Okay, remarks by the mayor and the council. Billy, you want to start?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you, I am. We had a, we had a very good District One meeting last evening at East Gadsden Recreation Center. Shane Ellison from the mayor's office was there and he entertained some very good questions from the citizens that were there. And I encourage you, and also, we had two police officers who were there in attendance, one's in regular patrol in District One and one's on special team. And they were there and they were very instrumental in answering questions for the citizens. And then they have, they have a better feel of what the citizens really want when they are attending these meetings and we're just enhancing that relationship that we need to have with the police department and the citizens of our city. We're coming together and they understand more of what the citizens want and now the citizens can understand more of what the police department expects of them, what they can do to help enhance the safety of their neighborhoods. And it was just a good meeting and I encourage everybody to come out and attend those meetings when we have them. Now, we're going to have another one on the third Monday of next month, the third Monday in August, I don't know the date right now, but at that time, I'm going to bring a complete, the completed new noise ordinance and I'll go over that, we'll go over that together as a, as a, as a community group so that everybody understands exactly what the noise ordinance states and how, what you need to do to help yourself when, you know, when you feel like somebody's in violation. And be sure to be there.
That's the 20th, August the 20th.
August 20th. And I, we also, I'm not going to put anybody on the spot like I did last week, but we'll have somebody from probably Public Works there also to, to speak to us on those issues who are, that are very dear to us as citizens. That's all I have right now, Mr. President, thank you.
David?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do want to recognize a District Two resident that's in the audience today who's a former elected official, Ms. Seretha Goggins. She's in the audience today, always, always good to see. So Buster, you're not the only former elected official in the audience today, so you gotta give her one up. But we do thank you for coming out and supporting us. And I'm going to assume that's, that's your husband, okay. Hadn't had the opportunity to meet him, but definitely good to have you. Just to speak to the, the ordinance that we just passed, I think, again, you know, one of the things that you, that you will see as it relates to this whole process is I don't think there are very many of us up here, if any, who are in support of this, of this ordinance. We all understand and know and believe that to some degree it is a tax on, on poor citizens because those are the folks that are generally involved in our penal system. However, you know, we, we don't, we don't want to miss the opportunity to say that we are very much in support of municipal workers and those folks who, who do support that system. And it's unfortunate that our budgetary system is, or budgetary state is such that we have to resort to raising fees and actually, in order to raise money. But, but again, philosophically, I think I've made myself pretty clear on this. This is a cryptic tax and there's really no other way to look at it. And in immortal words of Forrest Gump, that's all I got to say about that. The Birmingham News has a, has a great article, if you get an opportunity to, to read it today, you should. The Birmingham News has an article today that cites some Census Bureau data. And that data pretty much speaks to the, the fact that the poorer you are, the less educated you are, and to some degree, the older you are, the less likely you are to have access to the internet. You may recall that I was asked to chair a broadband committee sometime, a couple weeks ago, and we've had the opportunity to meet on at least one occasion to talk about the great opportunity that exists for us to improve our broadband capacity and more specifically for the local service providers to do more to, to increase that. You know, not only does it benefit folks with job searches and, and job searches and accessing information via the internet, but it also creates a much better situation for businesses that locate here and that are currently here to download and upload data and exchange data. So it's a great opportunity. Most of the arguments right now are philosophical, but it won't be long before we'll be able to qualify, quantify those arguments and make some very strong cases for cities making investments. There are a number of cities who've made investments in broadband networks. So at this point, you know, we're not saying that we're going to create a broadband network here in the city of Gadsden, but just know that that is something we're exploring, but we're likewise exploring the opportunity to, we're likewise exploring the opportunity to partner with the current service providers so that they can help us to, to increase our marketability to industry and, and other commercial partners. I'm sure the mayor will talk more later about the article that was in Sunday's paper about Gadsden's ranking. So, so again, this helps to augment that activity as well. Thank you.
Yes, along those lines, Derrick, you know, we were in, at the NBC Leo meeting and they talked about broadband and they pointed out the city of Durham, North Carolina and portion of their downtown area that they revitalized and the importance that broadband bought to that area and were able to, to do a lot of things. So I'm excited about the opportunity and hopefully. And they also talked about there was still some federal dollars out there. The state of Alabama, I forgot, they told us exactly how much it was, four, some million. As to what they did with it, I don't know if any of it's still left, I don't know, but there is still some federal dollars left out there on the table. So maybe if we get our act together in time, we might be able to access some of those dollars. I voted against the noise ordinance as well as the taxation, so I think I beat the taxation thing to death. I support the fact that the noise ordinance needed, we needed it bad, really bad. I mean, I get a lot of complaints about barking dogs, but also get complaints about gunshots, Ben and I both share that and a number of other issues. The problem I have that, and I'll just make it plain, in this new ordinance, it takes a lot of the burden off of the people and it puts more on officers and it takes some of the timing out, the fact that the officers have to go and get a noise meter and stuff like that. It's left up to their discretion and that's where I have a problem. Not that I have a problem with all of our officers, but there are a few officers that might misuse this situation and that's what I'm afraid of. And normally when they do, it's, 80% of the time it's in my district and 90% of the time it's with three or four people that they don't like or they've had problems with and whether it's justified or not, it's not the issue. The issue is it creates more and more problems because they can always say that the person was playing the radio loud or whatever the case may be. And I know I'm going to get those calls. So with that in mind, I, that's why I voted against it. I think there might be a better way to do it than just to leave it up to the discretion of some of the officers. Like I said, 99% of the officers I wouldn't have a problem with, with their discretion in dealing with the issue. It's just that 1% where the problem comes in and it's going to continue to be a problem, I think, in my community. So that's why, that's what I have a problem with. I do have my district meeting tonight, we changed it. Normally it's on Thursdays, but because of the meeting in Nashville, I'm chair of the National League of Cities Fair Committee and so I'm going to be in Nashville at that committee meeting. So we're going to be meeting tonight at the Carver Community Center at 5:00 and Jenny is not here to prompt me, so I think it's 5:00 tonight at the Carver Community Center. And while we're at it now, I'm going to go ahead on and announce my next month's meeting. We'll get back to our third Thursday night, which will be August the 16th. And hopefully we're going to be able to line up to some people to come. I think by that time Chad will be doing resurfacing and paving and stuff, so I might want to get you to come to that meeting and talk to us about some of the streets and stuff because I know there's going to be some folk on their street resurface. So I'm going to blame it all on you if they don't get it and you can tell them why. So we'll have you at that meeting. But again, we'll be meeting tonight at 5:00 at Carver Community Center.
I would like to share something that I just learned this past week. It's a state law, it's a parking law. I was not aware of this, but you, the law says that you can't park against the flow of traffic in residential or anywhere else. In other words, when you park on a street, you park with the passenger side against 18 inches from the curb. That's a state law. I was not aware of this and I would like to inform as many people that don't know it to, to be aware of it. Just be aware that that is a state law. You park with the flow of the traffic, you don't park on the, with the driver's side against the curb. That's facing the wrong way and you, it's against the law. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Pardon? I didn't get a ticket, but it would be $15 if you get one.
I don't think they have anything now that's less than a hundred.
I just want to say, you got a $15 ticket somewhere, I'll take one. Court, yeah, and court costs too, that.
I've done that on occasion, Bill, but I didn't know that made the car wider or something.
or something.
I don't, I do kind of understand the reasoning behind it, but it's, anyway, I just want to pass that information along, let everybody know it. I did not know that it was a state law, but it is.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate everyone that came to the District Six meeting last night at the Community Center. We did have a good crowd and we had some interesting conversations there last night. And I think we're all moving forward with our Save Our Neighborhood there in Alabama City in Oak Park Section. I do want to announce that this Saturday at 6, from 6:00 to 10:00 at the Alabama City Gazette, but we'll have music on Megan again this week. We've got three groups lined up and as always, there'll be free hot dogs and all the bottled water you can drink and maybe the weather cooperate with us and it'll be a good time this weekend. I did read something in a local paper this week, last week, that kind of disturbed me a little bit at first and I got to thinking about it. It said something about the guys that's up here, older guys. Everybody up here's old guys. And I just wanted to say to y'all that I appreciate everything y'all do, all these old guys up here do. And I guess I'm old. I fit right in with you. I'm old. And I'd put this city council up against any city council in the state of Alabama.
Absolutely.
So wherever you, whatever local paper you read that in last week, I'd just like to voice my opinion. That's all I got to say.
Talking about some old guys?
Thank you, Jenny. Somebody said there's a bunch of old guys up here.
Oh, okay.
But I would put you up against anybody in the whole state of Alabama.
Old or young?
Old or young. Hair or no hair.
All right.
It's the best city council I've ever worked with.
Me too.
Me too.
Well, we can pat ourselves on the back a little bit, I guess. You look at Stockton, California, File Bank Rescue, 300,000 people, Scranton, PA, everybody gets paid minimum wage. You know, there's some scary things going on in our country and thank the Lord we're doing very well here in Gaston.
If you want to go down the street, you can get in a fight.
I tell you what, I'm just not too good at testifying. You know, really, I don't want to say anything that going to record, so I'll talk to y'all after about that. I did vote for the Norris ordinance. I'm going to thank Chief Crane for doing it because I think really it simplified it. It really did. And I think any reasonable person, it's said two or three times in the ordinance, reasonable, can understand it. And if they don't understand it, then they got to pay the fine. And the police, I got enough confidence in Chief Crane to know that he going to train our officers in this Norris ordinance where they can handle it. So I got no problem with that either. And testifying about this council, I enjoy every one of y'all. And Bob and I are the older ones. We know that and y'all keep looking at us real funny and sideways and all that. But anyway, we here, Bob.
I'm not old.
I'm not either.
If you two guys left, the average age would drop in half.
Call your butlers looking at us real close right now.
Bob, you getting ready to call on the mayor? Mayor, will you take this to the next level, please?
Absolutely. You got it. I'm throwing the ball to you.
This is a good council. That's why things are running pretty good here, I can tell you. I wanted to come up here because I think this is some really good news and I want to get it out on all the outlets we can. We got notified a few days ago, there's a magazine called Area Developed Magazine and it's on the leading locations in the recession of, it ranked the nation's 365 metropolitan areas on 23 economic and workforce indicators during 2007 to 2012. Each area was given a ranking within each of the 23 indicators based on their statistical performance, with a one ranking being the best and 365 the worst. The magazine calculated overall rankings as well as rankings in three categories: prime workforce, economic strength, and recession busting cities. Gaston was named number 126 overall in the U.S. in economic job growth. In this category, Gaston ranked number two in the MSA locations among the 11 in Alabama, Florence being the number, Florence being also in there, the only two from the state of Alabama that was in that ranking. We were ranked number 15 overall on economic job growth of the top 20 southern cities. Gaston was named as one of the 50 small cities in the U.S., ranking number 41. Florence was number 27. That's the only other metropolitan area in Alabama to make that part of the list. We were also named as one of the top 20 southern cities at 15. Florence was number nine. Tuscaloosa was number 20, the only other Alabama MSAs to make this list. Gaston ranked 126 overall in the U.S. in economic and job growth in the category. Gaston ranked number two, which I've already said, among the top 11 in Alabama, following the Florence area. One reason for that is, well, two reasons actually, and I'll get to that in just a second. Gaston ranked number seven in prime workforce growth development in that category in Alabama. The magazine pointed out that most of the cities that did well in this category have major universities, which we don't have, and Florence has that. We also ranked number two in Alabama in economic strength indicators, following only Florence again. We ranked number one among Alabama metropolitan areas in the recession busting factors, according to the magazine. This provides a measure of an area's resiliency during the recession. It can be seen that Florence area was our main competitor in the state of Alabama. And the biggest difference in Florence and Gaston is they have a high cent sales tax, which is earmarked for job creation incentives, which has allowed them to commit more than $32 million to new and expanded companies since 2007. And then the other part was them having a major university located in their city. These outstanding results show that our economy is stronger than many other cities. It shows our small business, the backbone of our economy, have been growing in spite of the recession. It also shows the city's investments in improving our infrastructure are paying big dividends. And it shows that the city's support of economic development continues to produce results. And quickly I'll go over these, and I'm going to read the name because I'm proud to have them here. New companies since 2007, Farer Automotive, the Narmco Group, Decatur Plastics, RC Mold and Machine, Southern Cold Storage, Centos Corporation. The expanded companies are Goodyear Tire Rubber, Cook Foods, S.I.P. of Delaware, Intiva Products, Keystone Food and Gaston Fabricators. The new commercial projects since 2007, Chili's Academy Sports, Tuesday Morning, J.C. Penney's, Stevie B's Pizza, Books-A-Million, Tractor Supply, CVS, Fairfield Inn, Hampton Inn, Flipside Cafe, AT&amp;T, Zaxby's, Kobe Japanese Restaurant, Dirt Cheap, Back Forty, Yogurt Times, Joseph A. Bank, Children's Place, Beds Express, Trading Post, Old Mexico, Wild About Me, Hibachi Grill, Cash Saver. Expanded companies, Kirkland Home, Marvin's, Belk's, and Gaston Regional Medical Center. A total of 25 new companies and four expanded companies. And in the manufacturing, you had six new companies and six expanded companies. This is a big list here, but I do want to call them out because we're proud to have them. You've got Willa Tree. This is small business projects from 2007 to 2012. Willa Tree, Genworth Financial, Coconut Breeze, Farmer's Market, Charlotte Beet Company, Gaston Regional Imaging, Paul Davis Restoration, Cherry Creek Village, Next Level Sport, Secret Garden, Elegant Moments, Daymaker Salon, Bark Avenue, Hope for Life, Stripes for Us, Snowball Stand, Paul Harris Agency, Chihaw Media Consulting, Baptist Retirement Village Two, Handyman Pro, Don's Paint and More, Neurology Center of Gaston, Cusa Outfitters, Heat Scape Shop, AJ's Works, Environmental Recycling, Rainbow Shell Mart, Joy's Treasure, Peace Love and Pottery, Wilburn Orthodontics, Take Care Health Center, Jab Tax Service, Remax Properties, Crossroads Eatery, Oakwood Ridge Assisted Living, Lindelus Cafe, Physicians Choice Diagnosis, Touch of Class Photography, Print Parcel and Post, Perfect Imprints, Absolute Amusement, Wise Agency, Claris Productions, H&amp;P Cleaning, Ace All-Stars, Quick Financial Services, Mattress Max, Greystone Apartments, Stalls and Walls Marketing, Open Range Communication, Apex Sports, Goatees, Sewing Seeds, Lawn Care, Website Interactive, Etowah Foot Specialist, Moments to Recall, All Care, Kids' Party Zone, Candles and Designs, Leroy's Outhouse, Skin Care to Go, Mossy Oak Properties, Generations Bank, Able Portable Toilets and Septic, Primary Care Associates, Simple Pixel Media, Southside Pet Clinic, Motivated Movers, Keystone Bank, Southeast Hospice Network, BB's and Bedazzled, Comfort Care, Hospice Oncology Molecular Imaging, Guthrie's, Working Man Rentals, Law Office of Philip Miles, Visiting Angels, Miracles of Life and Photography, Planet Doggywood, Absolute First Health Clinic, Absolute Fitness, Gail and Rubish Cafe, Automotive Perfection, Edward Jones Investment, Gaston Women's Clinic, Edward Jones, Randy Barkum, Eagle Rock Thrift Store, ABC Productions, Etowah Foot Specialist, Struts, Ryan Capital, and CBS, for a total of 92 new small businesses in the last five years. And if you consider what all is going on nationwide, like some of the councils talking about, four cities in California are about to go bankrupt and of course, the one in Pennsylvania, plus I think Harrisburg is having some problems. Pritchard, I think they went bankrupt. The people who retired don't even get a check anymore. So there's a lot of bad things happening, but we're keeping our head above water and we're going to continue to do that. And I appreciate all the public support as well as the council here and all the employees. Thank you.
I'm moving to Gaston.
I'll entertain a motion. Where's your-
Someone.